Followed the special town council meeting for September 26, 2017. We're gonna open this meeting again with a pledge of allegiance. Moment of silence. Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Also, we're making the announcement in accordance with the master laws that we are taping the meeting. Is anybody else taping? And we have the special meetings for the appointment of a councilor to replace a seat vacated by Eric Madison in accordance with Article 2, Section 8 of the Town Charter. So, and then followed by the swearing in of the appointee to fill the, to complete the unexpired term of Eric Madison, then after that will adjourn. So now I'm gonna open to the discussion for the council. We need a majority vote before council. Just as a note, we did check with the Attorney General's office and there was an envelope with Paul's vote. He was able to, we were okay with him sealing the envelope, give it to Denise, and presented it to me.
Perfect.
So that was, that was actually what's allowed him to vote while he's not here.
Wanna have Tom or Denise read it in, or?
I don't think it was.
Well, maybe after, maybe after discussion.
Yeah, after we discuss it, we'll discuss a little bit and then.
Okay.
Do you want me to engage in discussion and cast a vote at the same time?
You can do whatever you like.
Or no, or just engage in discussion?
Probably engage in discussion when you think that.
Doesn't really bother me either way, Kathy.
Well, I'm just looking for format, that's all.
How about we discuss it, then we'll vote?
Okay. First, I wanna start by saying, I was excited to see that seven individuals offered their services and their time and talent to join the council. The caliber of candidates that came forward was remarkable. I applaud all of the candidates for offering to serve the community. Every single one has a talent they bring to the table, and regardless of who is elected this evening, I believe that that individual will bring yet another dimension of diversity to the skill sets that each of us brings to the table. And for that, I think it's a credit to the work of the council, and I firmly believe that the, the size of the field of candidates is directly related to, I'd like to hope, the beginning of the restoring of faith that the citizens of East Long Meadow have in the democratic process. And with that, I, again, congratulate all of you and wish you all well. As Ms. Menard said a couple of weeks ago, everyone here can be a winner because we have a number of vacancies on some very important boards and commissions that we would certainly encourage folks to be a part of if they so desire.
Thank you. Yeah, well, well spoken. Couldn't have said it better. I was really, really happy to get to know and familiarize myself with some, some people that I've known from the past and had an opportunity to work with in the town capacity and some people that I have never met. It's a difficult decision. You come down to only choosing one. And I didn't discount anyone because they didn't have as much or limited experience with town, because I had the least. So I viewed it as more of looking at their talents and, you know, what potentially they would bring to the table. And really, most importantly for me is, is ultimately how they're going to mesh with the larger group in terms of, you know, collaborating, working with a team environment, and keeping the towns', you know, best interests at mind at all times. So it wasn't easy. I definitely flip-flopped back and forth a couple of times, but you can do the best you can to make a final decision, and I hoped to take some of our, you know, candidate, potential candidates at their word, which was to help in other capacities, you know? And there certainly, you never know what the future will bring, there'll definitely be other opportunities in the future as well. So, thank you, appreciate, you know, the four that you've kinda come forward tonight. Thank you.
I'd probably say pretty much the same thing. We all appreciate anyone that comes forward that wants to represent the community, and unfortunately, there's only one seat, but there will be other vacancies, I'm sure, if not with the council, with other committees. You know, hopefully later than sooner, but I hope you wouldn't give up on wanting to continue to serve the community. One other piece I looked at was some of the areas that Eric Madison, his, his levels of expertise, what he brought, and looking at your resumes, I looked a little bit into, hopefully being able to find somebody that might have some of the same talents to replenish that area. But again, thanks for your time and thanks for coming in, and I appreciate you being here.
Mike?
You know, I echo everyone's thoughts on it. I mean, some of you I've, I've known for many years, and some I've just became, you know, got to know, and, and it was a nice card James sent by mail, appreciate that. And, you know, I'm, I am so damn proud of this town, because in the past, we would be, not have this talent pool step up, and this is, this is quite impressive. My challenge is, when you're filling a vacancy, is to say, what did the person with the vacancy bring to the table? And what, you know, having, getting to know Eric for this past year and a month or so, what he brought was a very strong background in the charter. And, and to be honest with you, I said, you know, we are still a work in progress, but we're becoming less of a work in progress. And even as recent as, like, a few meetings ago, we, you know, we made a mistake and, and we ended up catching it after. Sometimes it was, I think Dawn Stark's wife brought it to our attention. And, you know, we, we picked up, we, we're still learning, and this is, this position is a nine-month position. In fact, whoever gets it by the charter can't even put down candidate for reelection. So this is only a stopgap, a temporary. So I think, how I'm thinking is, who can fill, not so much the position, but who can fill the skill sets that Eric Madison brought and that we, I don't wanna say relied on, but we were able to fall back on, to understand the mind, the, you know, as we started to, you know, work the foundation of this charter that we're working on. And so that's, that was my thinking process. So notwithstanding any of that stuff, thank you, all of you who are here, took the time to show up tonight, and even those who, you know, who, whatever reason couldn't make it tonight. You know, this was, again, you know, really appreciated.
I just wanna say thanks, everybody, for putting in for it, coming to the, it was short notice, I know, to come and sit in front of everybody and talk about your background and why you really wanna do this, so that can be unnerving, I guess, for, for a lot of people. It was nice to see the varied, sort of, talent backgrounds that put in for it, the diversity, I guess, in people's resumes, for, for lack of a better term. And like I said, it was nice to see that we had a decent turnout for the one position, and, and everybody seems to really care about the town and what's best for the town. So, again, thank you to everybody that's here, and I, I mean, I was impressed with the, with the candidates, all of you did very well, I thought, and I guess now we move on to a vote. But thank you again. Mike?
I'm ready to vote.
All right. You wanna read Paul's letter?
Or I can read, whatever. I don't wanna touch it, is that illegal?
No, the clerk should read it.
Yeah, that's fine. Good, don't even touch it. My fingerprints aren't even.
We don't wanna, was that the guy who read the miss?
I guess it's Sheila, huh?
Yes, he licked it twice.
You sukkah.
From Paul Federici to Ms. Denise Menard. Denise, I am using this letter as my absentee vote for our new interim town councillor, and I would wish that my vote be read into the record at our meeting on September 26, 2017. They're in the vote for the new councillor. We, as usual, had a number of qualified candidates offer their talents and abilities to the town for the interim position, and for that, I thank and commend all of them. Based on experience, my various aspects of town government, and familiarity with the process of budgeting, and knowledge of how the branches of government operate, I am casting my vote for Tom O'Connor. Thanks to everyone who applied, and I'm sure Denise can find homes for all of you within our town government. Sincerely, Paul L. Federici.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay, I'd cast my vote for Tom O'Connor.
And I saw also for Tom O'Connor based on what I mentioned as far as being able to take Eric Madison's place.
Kathy?
I would also vote for Tom O'Connor for the very same reasons that Dawn just echoed.
I vote for Tom O'Connor as well. As I stated earlier, I looked what Eric brought to the plate, and I think Tom will do a fabulous job replacing what we lost.
And I'm gonna cast my vote for Tom O'Connor also. Tom, you, you know, have an impressive resume, not that everybody doesn't, and trust me, all you guys will have a home somewhere here, but Eric was not a charter member, charter commission member, you were charter commission members, so I think that's gonna help us down the road when we, when we need you, so.
Capital planning.
For everybody, I just wanna say thank you again, and please don't think it's like, don't lose interest, 'cause we're gonna need you. Lucky, we need you.
That, and there's an election coming in, in the summer.
True, and there is another election.
Surely.
Yeah, yeah, I'm up, so we'll see.
So, without further ado, I guess, Tom, you can come up. Time you want us to come to you, all right, fine.
Congratulations.
Thanks. Thanks. I'll just see you. All right. Sit down. I think we have to take a motion.
Do we have to, do we have to take a motion?
I don't see why. We'll do it. We'll just make a motion to confirm, to vote.
Yeah, do we? I think we need a motion to have that called, the vote, it has to be written.
Yeah.
We just gotta do a little technicality. We gotta read the motion.
To affirm the vote.
Yeah. Oh, by the way, I took, we're gonna.
And then, the chairman has to swear on it.
Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's good.
Oh, he's gonna be swearing before I can adjourn.
We gotta make a motion first, Kathy, to confirm the vote.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to affirm the, oh, so I have a little theory here, who's got it for me? I'd like you all to entertain a motion to approve the appointment of Thomas O'Connor to fill the vacancy on the town council until the next regular local election on June the 5th, 2018, at which point he may choose to run for a new three-year term.
A second.
Let's move to the second, we favor the discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Don't be shy.
Spotlight.
We're gonna break the rookie and let him sit next to me?
You got that right.
Just gonna raise your right hand.
Do you, Thomas C. O'Connor solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a member of the East Long Meadow Town Council in accordance to bylaws of the Town of East Long Meadow and the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
Aye. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, council. Where you going?
I still have a sign.
You're not running away. I'm gonna see you over here.
We need to adjourn.
Yes. We gotta adjourn a special meeting?
I got a confirmation for him.
Yeah, but he's got a big part of the vote now.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, this right here.
Let's let him make the motion, adjourn.
Yeah, he'll be his first one.
Yeah.
Oh, forgot his water. Quit already? That's fine. Yeah, that's okay. Okay. You wanna create a motion to adjourn? Sure, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second that motion?
What would you say, in all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five minutes?
Five minutes. All right, welcome to the town council meeting, regular town council meeting for September 26, 2017. We're gonna open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance, and follow that moment.
Pledge of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just a short, it was a very short, last. Very short moment. All right, now we take a moment of silence.
Thank you. We are making the announcement in accordance with the master laws that we are taping the meeting. Anybody else taping the meeting? Nobody's really here, so that's good. Public comments, we have none. Council comments?
If I may, I'd just like to say, I truly am honored to be selected, and I look forward to working with all of you, and also working for the best interests of the residents, something about, so, once again, thank you for the opportunity.
Welcome.
Tom, man jury point.
When you start by correcting that it's not the 27th, although in my head, it was the 27th, but it's only the 20th today.
27th is worth a buck, ain't it?
Just seems like a really long day, I guess. So, some changes have been made to our emergency management organization. Fire Chief Morissette has taken the role of Director of Emergency Management, which will oversee not just the Emergency Management Committee, but the local Emergency Planning Committee, and our CERT Citizen Emergency Response Team. In moving emergency management forward, many of the town staff went to emergency operations training. It was conducted by MIMA, Mass. Emergency Management, uh, Agency. And the training was excellent. It was hands-on, tabletop. We all participated, great participation, so we'll be well-prepared. The town is in a better place for emergency management than I think it has been for a while. Towns have been working toward formation of a regional dispatch organization. WestCom is the name of the latest group, and we received notification that the WestCom has been awarded $1.3 million, the, in funding. The grant was put in for $9 million, so we need to kind of regroup and look at where we're heading with that. So there's going to be a meeting of WestCom in October. There's a meeting of our town folks that are involved in that next week, so we should have some more information for you on that. Council Vice President Kane, Public Works Superintendent Finney, and I met with Hamden's first selectman, John Flynn, regarding Hamden's plan for requesting an expansion of East Long Meadow's sewer and water system into Hamden. This was a very high-level, very preliminary conversation, as Hamden needs approval for any expansion into their town from their voters on a number of different pieces of that. One piece is, they wanna create a DIF, and the DIF would be voted on this fall, and if that doesn't pass, they start over. If, if it does pass, then they expect to go to the voters in the spring. I've heard rumors that people are saying there were secret meetings, there was absolutely no secret about any of it. It was simply a conversation to hear what they had to say and to get the town, our town's message across that this is not to impact East Long Meadow in any way negatively nor financially. So I think that message was clearly received. The town planner continues to be out of the office. Chairman of the Planning Board, George Kingston, has been filling some of the void, as have I. However, I've begun looking for some temporary planning assistance to help in the planner's absence. There are matters that should not be handled by the chairman, as it would cause a conflict, and I'm very, very careful about that. We don't wanna compromise his decision-making ability at board meetings, and I don't have the level of expertise needed for some of the complex matters, such as the Chestnut property, you know, we don't wanna blow anything here. So I'll keep you informed.
Especially that project.
Yeah, yeah, and it is, it's very complex, it's very high-level with the zoning regs and all of that, so, you know, we wanna be very careful that we do do that correctly. Interviews for the rec director have been scheduled for the first week in October, so that position will be filled. John Whalen, who used to be the rec director, filled in through the summer. His last day was last Friday. He did a great job just filling in a lot of the pieces. He gave me a whole list of recommendations and observations that he had for the new rec director coming in, and for us to maybe look at addressing, so that's, that certainly will be helpful.
How many candidates so far?
Um, I think there were about 10, seven viable candidates.
That's good.
So I don't know, seven is a high number for us to interview. I think we're gonna try to pare it down a little bit more than the seven, I'll be dealing with that tomorrow. Something I didn't put in my report, but it's a really good piece of news, we've received a lot of complaints, and I, this is any town, and I think it has been going on forever, vacant or neglected properties. The guy next door's property value is going down because they've got, you know, a terrible house next door, so we've gotten a lot of those, we're very sensitive to it. The health department can go out and do some things, the police go out and do some things, but at the end of the day, there isn't always an effective way to deal with them. We have now connected with the Attorney General's office, and they have a process where we can deal with their process, the house goes into receivership, they deal with all of the pieces, and it gets resolved through the AG's office. It's a great process. We've put, I think, four properties in their hands now to just see how it works. So this'll be a great way, there are a couple of towns that are doing this already, and they seem very.
They were very helpful, but I, I met with that lady that runs the office there, she came over and did a presentation about that one.
Yeah.
And, 'cause we actually, we had talked to her about a few of the properties that we were looking at in town that were vacant, or those one that had a fire.
Right.
We were talking about that, and they were like, they're like, it's no big deal.
Yeah.
Just gave us this stuff for good.
They've got a whole department for it, it sounds like a great, great way going forward to deal with some of those. Two large road projects are tentatively planned for the first week in October. Kibbie and Mill Roads, paving is scheduled for October 2nd and 3rd, and line striping expected on the 4th. Also, we've been receiving a number of calls, and I'm, I'm sure you all have, have heard as well, gripes about maple shades condition. It's very, very common to let a trench settle over the winter, you patch it, you let it, let it settle over the winter, and then in the spring, the next paving season, it has settled, and now you get a good paving job. Otherwise, you pave it now, and, and, so we're educating a lot of people, and if you've got, you know, if you get complaints, you can, you can as well, we're sending them my way. The auditors were in last week, or this week, for the, no, was last, was it last week?
Last week, yeah, it was last.
The whole week, so, yeah, today's only Tuesday, just seems like a long week already.
You're not that lucky.
So, um, yeah, the, the audit has begun, they, we'll see where they go, I'm very confident we're gonna do fine. And at the bottom, you see some save-a-dates, free vaccination, flu clinic, pneumonia as well, October 4th, the flyer's on the back of your, your sheet, October 14th, the fire department's holding their open house from noon to 3:00. And October 21st, the Rotary Club is putting together a "Celebrate East Long Meadow on Centerfield." I know they're gonna have food vendors there, like a Taste of East Long Meadow kind of thing. I know that they had talked about a bonfire, I, I don't, I don't know what they're all putting together, so as soon as I get more information, but I thought you'd wanna save the date.
I got a quick comment, please, about, you know, Hamden and this, this, you know, water and sewer plan, and, you know, it's a little frustrating to me, because, you know, we're, we're trying to be good neighbors, and if it was just about the residents of Hamden, this maybe wouldn't be such an inflammatory, you know, kind of situation, but somehow, I have become the complaint department for Hamden residents, and I was already the complaint department for East Long Meadow residents, I don't know if you guys knew that?
I knew that.
And I'm getting a couple of calls a week of people, and they're, they're the ones that called me and asked why there was some secret meeting going on, which, you know, I had no knowledge of the meeting in the first place, but, you know, I appreciate you addressing that, and, and, and I think that it's just, you know, becoming this polarizing issue in their own town, and they're looking for us, you know, to stop this process, and I said, there, there is no process.
There is no process.
We, this is not a priority for us, not a priority at all. We've got so many things of our own to fix, we have our own schedule for our own infrastructure to be updated, and we're not gonna accelerate that as much as we wanna help our neighbor. And, and we will help our neighbor if that's ultimately what those residents want. So, you know, for other people that have asked me from East Long Meadow and for, you know, the people in, in Hamden, you know, they've got to address this with their selectmen. I can't tell them what's happening on that side, I can just say that nothing's happening on our side, because we have no interest to accelerate our, you know, discussions. I haven't been presented with any data whatsoever about what it would take, how long it's gonna take, and what the scope of the project would be, and ultimately, who's going to pay for it. So, and I, and I know other people have expressed the same concern, but it's just a little frustrating, 'cause it just seems like it keeps popping up, and, you know.
Well, I, I echo you, your remarks. I mean, one of the things that I, I pointed out the last time, and I said, this has to be in East Long Meadow's best interest, it can't be a wash, it can't be a, a neutral-sum game, it has to be in East Long Meadow's best interest. And, I mean, if, my memory serves me during our passing of the budget, that Springfield increased our water costs, and we didn't even pass on the full cost.
Right.
To our, our citizens.
Right.
We're absorbing it through free cash or through other means as well.
Well, an enterprise fund.
So we're, an enterprise fund.
Water and sewer enterprise.
Yeah, so we're, we're basically taking the brunt, it's not like the citizens are paying for what our water costs are. We're saying, here's what, you're only gonna absorb this, but we're gonna use the enterprise fund to pick up the rest of it. So we're, I don't know, we have to really look hard to see, are we in a position, you know, that we can then outsource water? As I mentioned, this has got to be, I mean, we all know what the driving force behind this, but for one entity, we would not. in their own town and they're looking for us, you know, to stop this process. And I said, there, there is no process.
There is no process.
We, this is not a priority for us. Not a priority at all. We've got so many things of our own to fix. We have our own schedule for our own infrastructure to be updated and we're not going to accelerate that, uh, as much as we want to help our neighbor. And, and we will help our neighbor if that's ultimately what those residents want. So, you know, for other people that have asked me from East Long Meadow and for, you know, the people in, in Hamden, you know, they've got to address this with their selectmen. Um, I can't tell them what's happening on that side. I can just say that nothing's happening on our side because we have no interest to accelerate our, you know, discussions. I haven't been presented with any data whatsoever about what it would take, how long it's going to take and what the scope of the project would be and ultimately who's going to pay for it. So, and I, and I know other people have expressed the same concern, but it's just a little frustrating because it just seems like it keeps popping up and, you know.
Well, I, I echo you, uh, your remarks. I mean, one of the things that I, I pointed out the last time and I said, this has to be in East Long Meadow's best interest. It can't be a wash. It can't be a, a, a neutral sum game. It has to be in East Long Meadow's best interest. And, um, I mean, it, my memory serves me during our passing of the budget that Springfield increased our water costs and we didn't even pass on the full cost
Right.
to our, our, our citizens.
Right.
We're absorbing it through free cash or through other means as well.
Well, an enterprise fund.
An enterprise fund.
Sure enterprise.
Yeah, so we're, we're basically taking the brunt. It's not like the citizens are paying for what our water costs are. We're saying, here's what, you're only going to absorb this, but we're going to use the enterprise fund to pick up the rest of it. So we're, I don't know, we have to really look hard to see, are we in a position, you know, that we can then outsource water? As I mentioned, this has got to be, I mean, we all know what the driving force behind this, but for one entity, we would not be engaging in this conversation. All right? And that's fine. That's fine. That's what, that's what towns do. They look out for the interest of both their citizens and their businesses and that's a fine thing. But that's our job too. And we need to look out for what's in the best interest of the people of East Long Meadow, not only now, but in the future. And...
Can I carry over another couple of points?
Why not? Um, what's been going, I had a constituent write to me on social media privately and asked, the process of fee increases. He, he had a concern because he owns a, a place that just sells tobacco in East Long Meadow, so you can do the math, figure what that is. And he said, I'm being charged 300 dollars like anyone else. And again, that's, but he just wanted to know what the, but he wasn't so much complaining about that. He wanted to know what the process was to determine. Is that something just determined by the Board of Health?
Yes.
They have a right to set those fees.
And I will tell you what the process was for setting those fees, only because I looked into the same issue for that same individual.
Okay.
Uh, is they haven't gone up in a number of years, I don't know, 20?
Oh, 20 years, okay.
We were so out of date.
So out of date with what other municipalities this size
Yeah.
uh, are charging for, actually for everything, for all our permits, licenses and everything else, so.
Oh, no, I, I just care as to history was, that's all.
When they sat down and started to look at, what are we charging and, you know, what are other communities charging that are the same and sort of how, when did they change last? And so the increase looks sort of dramatic, but if you went to take that business anywhere else, they're either paying the same or more.
Gotcha. And then the last point question was, and this was just for me, the constituent question is, what happened at the last Board of Health meeting? If you knew about their discussion about, uh, dropping, raising the smoking, uh, purchase of tobacco age from 18 to 21?
I don't think a lot of action was, uh, there was, there was discussion, it was an agenda item, um, but it was while I was at the emergency meeting.
Okay, so they didn't take any action.
They did not and I've been assured that they will be coming to you with a report before they do anything.
Perfect.
So absolutely, you know, I, I carried the, the message from the last meeting.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate that.
Anybody else?
Good.
Okay. Are you done?
I'm done.
Do you have anything else you want to share with us to these?
No, I do, I do want to reassure you all that, uh, the Hamden thing, uh, I think Mike can, can attest, they, they got a very clear message that it's not what's in it for them, it's what's in it for us. And, you know, they tried pushing a little bit for, well, can you advocate for, no, we're not advocating for anything. Well, do you think you can, you know, think about a, a good fast process? No, in fact, I said, uh, your fire is not our fire. Um, uh, we are not in a hurry to do this. We're not, it's, it's not our...
It's just out of curiosity and I missed the meeting, but who's their DIF going to be with?
It's just a district, that, that establishes a district just for where they want to, it'll give them some grant opportunity, right.
Just a smart portion where they want to put the thing.
The business...
It's not with another municipality, it's just their own district.
No, no, right. And, and it's going to be, um, we could, we could have created a DIF for the Chestnut Project, Chestnut Street Project. So this is just, I think, if, um, Mike, do you remember, it's just that center where they have the businesses in the center, right?
Yeah, it's basically where the mini mall is.
Yeah.
That portion of town.
That bit, L.
And there's, there's steps. This is really far off. It's, that has to be voted on in October and before East Long Meadow could even lend an ear to Hamden, it would have to be passed by their, uh, voters at, at a town meeting and that meeting isn't even till May.
Remember how...
So, I mean, we did a lot of listening and that's really, you know...
And, and remember the DIF was a complicated process for all of us to understand and I brought it month after month to you. They're not doing that with their voters, so, you know, I, are they, are the voters going to understand that? Just having it, they're going to do some kind of town meeting thing and then have the vote after that, but, you know, they, they, they should be planning on being pretty aggressive in, in educating the voters on what a DIF is before they expect that to be, you know, approved at, at a town, is it, would it be a town meeting or?
Yeah, a town meeting.
Yeah, so I think they've got a, a bit of a road to, to go before we even need to worry about it.
And on the subject of DIF, if you guys remember, when we talked about that with Long Meadow, we kind of said, you're putting the cart before the horse. Why don't you go to town meeting first?
Meeting first.
And if you're successful, come back to us. So it's the same situation here, only they have two hurdles. They have a DIF and then they have town meeting, which is way off in May.
In the spring, yeah.
And, and, you know, so, I mean, we were good neighbors and we listened, but they have, they have a lot of work to do. You know, it's...
Anytime I'll keep fielding calls.
Always very good, actually, Jim.
I got my cellphone number, I don't have to bat that around. I'm kidding. It's crazy.
It's been on a wall somewhere.
Yet to be the person, other than the selectman, that is, uh, has any interest in that happening from Hamden, so. That's going to be interesting anyhow.
So, thank you.
Yeah, sure, problem. Not hurt yet.
All right, so now we can move on to approval minutes for the September 12th, 2017, open session, special meeting. I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session special meeting minutes from September 12th.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Now, do you...
Stand.
You got him standing, right?
He did.
Nice. Quick on the draw over there, buddy, huh?
Kick winner.
And then we're going to, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve the open session, um, the open session meeting minutes from September 12th, 2017. Not the special meeting agreement.
So moved? Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll stand.
Communication correspondence announcements, do we have?
The, the flu clinic, Denise, what you...
All right. What is the day? License matters. So we have a one-day liquor license for St. Louis. The one issue with this is that they have not paid the, the license fee, right? St. Louis is only...
Well, they, uh, fill out the application, they have not submitted the tip certification or the certificate of insurance or the fee yet. Their event isn't until October 12th. We've been in contact with her two, three times, they are working on it. So, at this point, I suggest we table it and then, uh, address it at the next meeting.
Which is before, before, uh, October 13th.
But are they aware that we're only meeting two days before and if they're not, if their house isn't in order, then we can't approve it?
Or it's, God forbid, we don't have a court.
Because our meeting's on the 10th.
Correct.
Yeah. Right, day after Columbus Day.
Was there some issue?
It's not overly difficult for them to get the documents and it's not a new thing for them to have to have these things, so it's, they, it seems like they should be readily, mostly readily available.
Yeah. Also, wasn't there an issue at the last meeting of the, the time that they're open? The length of the time?
There was some discrepancy in the hours that were on the application.
Right.
Because it was one of the, it was, the hours were passed, supposedly authorized or something, for a one-day liquor license.
Okay, so we're good there?
Yes.
All right, so we're just going to table it either way?
Yes.
These are three unique licenses, one, two, three days.
They need three separate, so...
And that's what I say here.
Uh, we'll get to that in a, further on down this agenda, we'll get to that part of it, but I'll entertain a motion to table it.
So moved?
Second.
Yep, third.
Moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So we have a one-day liquor license for St. Mark's for October 19th, 20th, 21st, 2017, 6 to 11, and October 22nd, 1 to 6 p.m. for a play. They have their insurance.
We have everything necessary.
Everything, everything's in, yeah. I'll entertain a motion to approve, uh, we're, those are four different licenses, all right?
So moved?
Can I make a motion? Can we?
Tom, are they four separate?
They're for three days, or four days, so four one-day applications. So they filled out applications four times.
Four times, yeah. Is it in order if we make a motion to approve one vote for all four licenses? Is that in order, Jim? It is? Okay.
That's why I was asking, to make sure.
If somebody did not make that motion, I make a motion that we do one vote to approve four one-day licenses as per our, per our agenda.
Second.
So moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now we got a hold of the licenses, I figured you did that, that's yours. One-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple for October 14th, 6 to 11, for a shower. The Masonic Temple's all set too?
We have all the necessary people.
Oh, that's right, they're in your office now, right? You're the, you're the license guy.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, perfect. So I'll entertain a motion for the one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple.
So moved?
October 14th, 6 to 11. Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have a second one-day liquor license for the Masonic Temple for October 20th, 2017, 6 to 11, for their officer installation reception. I'll entertain a motion for that.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Old business, we don't have any? New business? I wanted to just, uh, take one thing out of order, I'm going to make a motion and we take, uh, three under new business first. Out of order.
Make a motion to move C3 in, to be our, to be come right before C1.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so formation of our media communications, Don, this is...
This is me. Yeah, I kind of thought so. I saw it, I went, that's me.
That's why I wanted to move it up. So we're going to form a media communications subcommittee. So I honestly...
Yeah, so if I can reach out to certain, to people, obviously anybody here is welcome as, as well, and, uh, I just want to get your vision, just make sure it parallels, you know, so what do you, what do you, is it, what's the ultimate goal? Is it, I see it as better communication with constituents, getting pertinent information out and so forth, you know, in a more effective way, uh, than we are doing now, not that we're doing it in a bad way, just to bring it out even to a higher, higher level of...
You're that like social media guy, Twitter?
I know, I told you, this, this dude inspired me last week. He made a comment, he said, yeah, all the jokes and stuff. You know what, you know what, good point. Here's an interesting thing, I'll just share with you real quickly, is if you're on Facebook, um, you can create a, uh, a public figure page, is that's how we are described as elected officials, public figures, and they have a certain format at, within the Facebook page that you can send information out, information about whether you choose this close polit- your political party. But what was of interest is Facebook vets you. It took them 36 hours, I don't know if they called Denise or whether they just did independently, checked and makes your, they called him from Hamden. That was it. And they, they, they checked independently to see if I was, and then I got an email from somebody from Facebook, said, yes, you're, you're allowed to continue your page. So I can't say I'm, I'm Donald J. Trump, you know, I'm Donald J. Anderson, you know, that type of thing. So, uh, so if you, you know, I encourage you to do that because it create, and then what's important is you take information, like I put in information about, uh, the, the Board of Health meeting and I shared my, my thoughts about, uh, that I wasn't in favor of, of dropping the, of raising the age to purchase tobacco and I cited reasons. And I also mentioned, I shared Ryan Quimby's post about the new 911 registration for your cell phones that we have that just came out. Um, and there's a lot of other important stuff. The new training that they're having for the fire, in the fire department, I put that up on the page. And just moments ago, I just posted Mr. Tom O'Connor's swearing-in picture on the page. But I'm doing that for effect, just to show that, but if we have, if you choose to have pages like that, just strictly as a town counselor, um, and you find information and you cross-share it, it makes it more organic and it gets more relevancy. So then the citizens are more likely to find out about, um, a 9/11 memorial event and other important events, or Taste of East Long Meadow, whatever they're calling it, future events. And that's just the way it is. Otherwise, things get buried. And so that's kind of the thing I'm trying to work on, is trying to maybe, if that's what your vision is, is talking with other, the school committees, talking to others and finding ways to cross-promote each other so that our message will get to the citizens of East Long Meadow. Not our message, the message that, 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 if boards want for public safety and other general information gets out to people. And that's going to be a challenge, but...
I, I think the individual pages, um, are helpful. I mean, I, I look at kind of us as a town, what our responsibilities are in terms of disseminating information and how people are currently consuming information. And we're so far off, you know, we're not getting to people, um, because our format is, is not there. So we have to modernize kind of our, our, our media and let people know what's happening and what's going on. I mean, I can tell you that, you know, if we take an hour video of our meeting, people aren't sitting down, millennials aren't sitting down and watching the video, I can tell you that.
Yeah.
Yeah, short snippets, it's, you know, we, we do a lot with, with learning management systems and the way that they're, all the content that's being pushed out, uh, the modern content is unbelievable. I mean, it's, you, you're like, less than a, probably three to five minute video might be like, pretty like extensive, and then there's a series of things. So, you know, we, we have to figure out ways, like, you know, i- if we have, and not our pages, but if we have an official Facebook page and a, and a Twitter handle and like, who is responsible for information? How's it getting vet out to make sure that it's proper, it's not offensive? And then it's appropriate, you know, information that we're putting out there in small snippets to give people a little taste. They can access additional information if they need it, but it's not getting consumed properly, I can tell you that, because I, I've asked and they're, they're like, you know, they just don't, they're not connecting with us, you know, and it's like that, that kind of younger generation wants to be part of it. They, they can be very socially active and involved if you connect with them in the right way. So I love what you're doing there, um, but that's, you know, that's your, like, if all seven of us did it and we interconnected, we're going to reach a lot bigger pool.
Yeah.
Which is great, you know, I'm not very active in that stuff. It's, that's kind of something that I, I try to force myself to be a little bit more active, but, but I would like to see us do something, um, you know.
I tell you, the constituents love, um, using, uh, social media messaging to get messages to them, you know, to get that as a vehicle, because they, you know, they, they try to ask you questions and, uh, you've become, like I said, one of the jobs, it's not our job description, but by default, we're 3-1-1. They'll say, yeah, I got a question about trash. Okay, so they think we're involved, I say, no, here's who you're going to call and, and I say, "No, here's who you're going to call," and so forth. And a lot of it's easy too. Like, for instance, we got a free program, you know? I mean, I may, you know, I, you know, I'm having, you know, I questioned the board of health on a couple of things. That's because I'm, you know, quasi-libertarian in my thinking. But they're doing a great thing with the flu clinic. And I was at your office, and I saw this flyer. So, I talked to Denise, and I said, "Could you like scan it or get me a copy of this thing?" By the time I got back to my office, there it was, and I put it up on the page. But here's what was interesting, is that, you know, if you have proof of insurance, you get the flu shot. But residents of this town that don't have insurance will still get the shot. That message needs to be reached to these people to say, "Yes, you're still going to get health care in East Long Meadow for a flu shot." And that's, this is an important message to get out to people. And again, you know, if two or three people find out and it saves, you know, sickness, then we've done something. But I hate to have people say, "You know, geez, you know, I don't have, I can't afford insurance and, you know, and whatever, and I wish, you know, I knew and I would have had a flu shot." So, that message really needs, you know, that's just one tiny example. But there's much more that people just don't walk in the town hall looking at flyers and checking stuff anymore. They're looking on their smartphones. They're looking on their laptops. They're checking others. And sometimes, we just have to find strategies to get the message to them.
Yeah.
Because these are great services.
Similar to the site you created last week, which was individually.
Yeah.
If you did something on the same context with the support of a subcommittee representing the entire council, I think that would be the way.
Oh, it is. That'll be part of it. But remember, to make something organic is not to have just a town council Facebook page. It has to be share, 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 share. Then all of a sudden, the analytics is going, "Whoop, there's something going on here." And you start falling into news feeds of others. That's, you know, I made my post yesterday about the, you know, what I, my observations of the Patriots game. People started commenting, commenting, and all of a sudden, it went from a couple likes or comments to 50 and so forth, and only because it kind of snowballed, you know, not become viral, but on a local level, that happens. So, having a great message, but not having other people interested in the message, you know, as other people can be us and other people in town, that's what gets the message out, because they'll just think, "Oh, just the town council."
Well, yeah. And so, you know, back to, well, I got two points. I'm not a libertarian. I just don't think the government should be so big.
No, I said, I said I'm quasi. That's what I said.
But, you know, this has to be somewhat agnostic, right? It can't be my political views or Don's political views about the Patriots, which goes back to the original, like, you know, comment of who is going to take responsibility for as we identify other means of, you know, kind of trying to stay on, somewhat on the front end of the technology curve and how we access information. And if you're going to create almost a blog environment, someone responds with something offensive, then someone has to take it down, you know, without censoring other people's opinions. It is not an easy thing to do, because I know other organizations, I have lots of private organizations, nonprofits, you know, and everybody in between, and they struggle with it. So, if it gets done and gets done right, we can get information out there in a quicker, more appropriate way, in a format that more people are consuming, you know, on a daily basis. And then we can do something separate that we choose to do, and then it's our personal pages, it's our political views, and we're not necessarily representing the whole organization or the whole town. Because I think that gets a little dicey, you know? If one of us is in charge, it's going to have our flavor.
Well, if you do the town council, what I'm understanding is you all will have a town council page, but what I'm going to be doing is looking for a town Facebook site, someplace that people can ask questions and vent, and also, we can share our events and town managers' report goes on the webs, our website. It can go on that.
The website's not really overly used, is it?
Yeah. No, it's not.
Well, that's what our Facebook page is right now. It's Town of East Long Meadow, and all it is is hyperlinks to the website, you know? And that's, if you want, you see town council meeting. So, you click on that, it goes right to the website, and then it goes to agenda, and then you click on that.
Yeah.
And so forth.
It's cumbersome. Yeah. No, there's, well.
That's what it is. And again, I'm not faulting anything. That's just, that's just what it is.
That's what we all inherited, so.
Yeah.
That's why we need a media communications subcommittee.
Exactly. But what we need to do is I need to get the best minds, the media minds, and people with, you know, and that's going to be my challenge, and I might put it up on my page and others and say, "People are interested, private message me." And, you know, because, I mean, the person behind the camera there, Don, is a great social communicator. We also have some great marketing people out there. I mean, maybe we reach out to that person that was on Caterie Walsh's committee, and I'm just having, forgive me for forgetting her name. I should not.
Teresa Borreki.
Yes. And she was talking about not reaching out to her age group, which I'm presuming is the millennials. That might be something that, you know, because of her involvement of running a campaign, it'd be very helpful to get message out.
Absolutely.
She'd be a good person. I would like to talk to her.
And I think those people that help you will then evangelize that idea, and it'll spread and spread and spread, because I really would like to see us, you know, take a step forward.
I have a person in this town, a couple of people, one of our police officers, he's also involved with marketing. He owns a, like, a camp, you know, I won't mention too many names, and another person out there. So, I got some ideas out there, but we just got to.
The government's big about this, you know?
No, I honestly, I tell you, it was him last week that said, you know?
Keep blaming me.
Because you were saying, make the, I said, "You're right. It is. There's so much jokes on my page." I said, "I'm going to do something just strictly dedicated to town council and see what happens." And I got like 100 followers in like a day. And I said, "Well, if I can do that, imagine the power of the Town of East Long Meadow, what it can do and get people, get messages out about the great work that's being done that nobody knows about, you know, out here." And I think that's a very powerful, very powerful tool. But we just got to get, we got to cross-generational support and different ideas coming to the table. And I think we all, we can hopefully, we could get some, get some exciting things happening.
So, you're going to accept a position?
Did I have a choice? I've been drafted.
What position was that? What are we talking?
Grand Phoo Pa.
He's a social media guru.
He is now, yeah. Grand Phoo Pa. Someone had to do it. All right. Sure.
So, now we'll go back to, well, now it's item two, but was item one, developing a policy for naming and renaming town facilities. So, this came about with the request that had been submitted to the rec department at some point over the last year. Don, you're.
Yeah. Bruce Evans wrote to me, and they were trying to rename the pool. And we ran into kind of like a block to say, "Well, how do we rename the pool? How do we rename anything?" So, we didn't have a policy in place. So, we're just trying to discuss to say, "Is it something that we, we get a proposal, and then we have a, we have to have a public hearing, and then, because it is town property, and then we vote to rename the, rename or name something that is nameless, a facility of the town." And that's the key. I don't think we had any methodology in place. I don't know, if Jim has any ideas from other towns he's involved with, what's the procedure?
I have received, I've received, well, actually Kathy suggested that Ludlow, he said, has.
Ludlow, yes. Recently dedicated one of their soccer fields in memory of a soccer coach who passed away two years ago.
So, so I've.
I suspect that that.
I've made a note of calling Ludlow.
They must have some policy or bylaw.
And I work with the town administrator there. She's, and John Whalen, one of the things that he left me was a thumb drive with policies on naming parks, because he's a, he's like a part of the National Recreation Park Association or something like that. So, I have that as well, and I will look at what those policies are, and I can provide you all with some suggestions if you'd like.
Okay.
All right. That was easy enough. And then we move on to the formation of the licensing subcommittee. So, I'm trying to, the licensing subcommittee, we talked about before. Tom, I don't know if you, I don't know if you were here at one of these meetings where we talked about this, but we're talking about, or have talked about for a little while now, probably a month or longer, making a licensing subcommittee so that we, bottom line is that the licenses are all over the map. Some restaurants are open too, some campies, some of this, some of that, some have special permits for certain things and so on and so forth. So, we kind of wanted to streamline that whole process and make kind of like a standard, really, for the licenses that we issue. So, just to bring it up to speed.
Thank you.
So, I don't know who's interested in serving on that.
Kathy. I'm interested in serving.
That was quite important. You threw her up in the bus fast, huh?
I might want to add that Marge has laid out the foundation for this. She's done a tremendous amount of work. Some of us have gone and have looked at that. It's really kind of formalizing.
Actually, Kathy had looked at it.
And I know that Kathy participated in that, so, not to volunteer somebody, but I know she does.
Anybody else has any interest in serving on that?
Yeah, I would be glad to serve with Kathy.
All right.
How many do you need on the committee?
Probably three.
Probably three. I wouldn't mind doing it myself, so.
There you go. And I could fill as an alternate? I would take it as an alternate if somebody couldn't be there and you wanted three, so.
Yeah. All right. That would work perfect.
And I have the book, the book with all the licensing stuff in my office.
And I know that, just to sort of pair with what Mike already said, Marge has already done, I mean, she went through.
An incredible amount of.
A whole lot of work to make these documents and checks and make sure, so, I mean, cool out to her.
That's pretty impressive.
That was a good pitch.
So, the, this subcommittee meetings will be publicized?
Mm-hmm. I think you have to.
Yes? Jim?
They're not a quorum. Jim, do we have to publicize the subcommittee meetings?
You have to what?
Publicize subcommittee meetings if they're not a quorum?
You don't have to.
Like, public notice?
You need to have a, if you have a subcommittee, a formal subcommittee established, you need to schedule a meeting similar to a council meeting.
Okay.
Do they have to keep minutes, and you adopt those minutes, or you have to adopt?
So, I would volunteer, Marge.
She's got the background.
She's pulled it all apart, and these guys are, licensing that falls to the council has been totally moved to the town clerk's office. So, they've got enough on their plate that Marge has spent the last year pulling it all apart, giving them their pieces, but there are other licenses as well. So, I'm sure she would be more than willing to help the subcommittee just figure out the best way to tackle the pieces, and she is intimately knowledgeable in what's going on now.
Create some uniformity.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right.
Great.
If I could, one of the things that we probably should look at right away on that subcommittee is the, is the daily, is the fee for one-day liquor licenses.
We'll go back to where we were. The fees being low, significantly lower than their surrounding communities. And I know, Tom, you and Jeanie already looked it up, so I'm not going to steal credit for.